For August the 13th, 2013. If you can just take a moment to silence your cellphones, I sincerely appreciate it. Just to ensure that they're off, phone vibrate, so it will not disrupt the proceedings. Can we all stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight I have the honor of providing the invocation, so those who will, please pray with me. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together to do the business of the people. God, we ask that we have a good meeting, that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in your sight. God, we thank you for the honor of having the privilege to serve your people. Tonight, as we deliberate over our agenda, help us to make decisions that will move our community forward, bring our community together, and to help bring this, make this a community a stronger community and a better community. We ask that you bless those who protect our community, whether it's through the armed forces, through our police, our firefighters. We thank you for those who make it a better community. Lord, we just ask that you bless this community, bless this proceeding. In your son's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight we have some good news, and we're going to start that good news with employee recognitions by the city manager, Mr. Jackson.
Yes, thanks for this opportunity. We have several recognitions to do this evening, want to move through these quickly, but want to give all due credit for the great accomplishments that are presented here. I would like to go ahead and call up Darrell Rice, Rob Martin, Kevin Hockenberry, Battalion Chief Joy Ponder, Darlene Barnwell, and Amy Patterson if they would come forward. And if there are any department directors, their department directors want to come up, this would be a good time for you to come up as well. The very first, thank you very much. Give Eric just a moment, because the first recognition I want to do is for Amy Patterson, our purchasing manager. Amy, if you'll step forward. Amy is now a Certified Local Government Purchasing Officer. Amy earned the title certificate, the title of Local Government Purchasing Officer through the North Carolina School of Government. North Carolina governments must abide by very specific procurement and contracting laws. It's a very precision business and must be transparent to everyone. This certification means that Amy and the city's purchasing division are recognized as providers of the highest level of business practices in the state. Amy has been the city's purchasing manager since 2007 and has been pursuing this certification for much of that time in an effort to build herself up as well as to raise our purchasing performance within the department. So we congratulate Amy very much.[238.51][238.51](Applause). Anything to add, Eric?
Yeah.
Battalion Chief Joy Ponder. I'm going to ask, go ahead and ask Chief to go ahead and do this for me, because this is a proud moment for the entire department.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. It certainly is. Chief Ponder has completed her National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Program, and this is a very distinguished accomplishment in the fire service. Only one out of three participants in the program complete the program, and even a smaller group are actually accepted into the program. What is amazing about Chief Ponder is she began this program before she was promoted to Chief Officer. It's a four-year program at our National Fire Academy, postgraduate level work for four years, and she was accepted into this program as a company officer before she was even a chief officer, which is just unbelievable and speaks of her abilities. And she continues to really make the city of Asheville and the Asheville Fire Department very proud with her accomplishments, and this is one more capstone to her career as she completes the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program and receives her diploma for that program.[335.34][335.34](Applause).
I'd like to now call up Robert Griffin, who served a very illustrious career in the Fire Department as well. And so, the reason why Robert's up here is we have some fleet mechanics to recognize, and Robert is soon to be retiring as the General Services Director over Fleet and General Services. But if I could just take the liberty of, let's give Robert a round of applause for his great work.[381.31][381.31](Applause). Don't you say a few words about the fleet operation that you're now proud of?
Yes, sir, I am proud of it. Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Jackson. The three individuals that you have in front of you have achieved a level of certification to be able to inspect and certify CNG vehicles that only a couple of other people in the state of North Carolina have. And that speaks volumes to the type of employees that y'all have here at the city of Asheville. And these guys go out of their way to come in after hours when there's emergencies and that, and yet they still do this certifications and get these specialized trainings to better serve the internal customer, which allows us to serve the external customer better. And with that, I would like for Darrell Rice, Rob Martin, and Kevin Hockenberry to be recognized for their specialized certification.[455.12][455.12](Applause).
As council knows, we have the CNG station that we make available to the community, and it was built in partnership with Buncombe County and Mission Hospitals. We now have 35 CNG vehicles, and this allows us to take care of these in-house. It's a major benefit to have this level of skill on our staff. The final recognition is not for on-the-job. It is for unsung heroism and completely unplanned, unlike the other certifications and development that you saw here. This is somebody showing heart and courage spontaneously. And that is, I want to describe for you the incident, and then we'll recognize the individual. On May 28th, 2013, a member of our water customer service billing team was at her home having a cookout, and she heard a woman screaming that her child was missing. Our employee asked the woman the age and name of the missing child. The woman replied that he was eight years old and autistic. Immediately, our employee went in search of the child, asking neighbors along the way if they had seen an eight-year-old boy. As she proceeded down the road, the sound of dogs barking drew her attention to a particular house. She couldn't see the dogs but could hear them. Cutting through the next-door neighbor's yard, she spotted the boy inside the fenced backyard being mauled by four dogs. Despite the danger and with no thought of her own personal safety, she climbed over the barbed fence and entered the yard, knowing in a minimum she could divert the dog's attention to her and away from the child. She shouted, she ordered the dogs to stop, they responded, she scooped up the boy in her arms, climbed back over the barbed wire fence, and carried him to safety. A neighbor had called 911, and the first responders arrived in the scene rushing the boy for emergency medical treatment. This unsung hero, previously unsung, is Darlene Barnwell. Darlene?[613.16][613.16](Applause). We're so proud of you, Darlene, and it touches all our hearts to know that you would do that. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Told you we had some good news. And it's going to continue. The next item of business is the announcement of the Strive Not to Drive winners, and Claudia Nix is going to accompany me, and we're going to recognize a few people who have gone above and beyond on the issue of striving not to drive. Is Claudia here?
We're happy to be giving out the awards for this year's Strive Not to Drive event, which took place during the third week of May. May is National Bike Month, and the third week is Bike Week. Bike-to-Work Day in Asheville started in 1991. In Asheville, folks are encouraged to reduce driving alone in their vehicles and try another form of traveling, which can include carpooling, riding the bus, walking or riding a bicycle. Since 1998, we have been giving out the Golden Award to individuals who exemplify their efforts in multi-modal travel. A Leadership Award is also given to the individual who leads others to use multi-modal modes of travel. Each year, we're seeing more people who are becoming multi-modal travelers. The following individuals are receiving the Golden Award this year. And when I call your name, if you could come up, and if we could hold a applause so everyone can be applauded at the same time, I'd appreciate it. This way. All right, so if you'll come stand this way.[781.82][781.82](Laughter). The Golden Will Award goes to Derek Daniels. He uses a combination of his bicycle and the bus to go from North Asheville to work at the Asheville Airport, which is a 40-mile round trip. Derek has helped others to work with bike maintenance, through working with bike maintenance and repairs. Congratulations, Derek.[807.12][807.12](Applause). Okay, see, y'all start clapping. I got to call the next person.[816.12][816.12](Laughter). The next one is the Golden Spoke Award goes to Jared Porter, who rides his bike to work no matter the temperature or the weather condition. He lives in West Asheville and commutes to the Bistro on the Biltmore Estate. He has been such an inspiration that his manager has begun commuting by bike. Biking is a part of his soul. His round-trip commute is 25 miles. So Jared, he couldn't make it? Next is another Golden Spoke Award. It goes to Moses Soto. He applied for an Employee Challenge Grant this year, which gave him money to purchase a new bike and all the equipment he needs to use his bike to get to and from work. He lives in West Asheville and commutes on Bravard Road and Long Shoals Road to work, which is a treacherous route, and about a 15-mile round-trip commute. He also helps to build mountain biking trails in his neighborhood of Bent Creek. Next, the Leadership Award goes to Kathy Maylar, who was an occasional bike commuter until a car wreck a year ago. She decided to make bicycling or riding the bus her way to get around instead of fixing the car, and she sold it. Kathy teaches at Evergreen Charter School and has been an inspiration to other teachers and students. She helps fellow teachers learn how to use the bus or figure out which route to ride for their commute to work. Her round-trip commute from West Asheville to the school is about 16 miles. Several individuals nominated Kathy for this award.
(Inaudible).
Kathy, okay. No Kathy?
She, her mother is married.
Oh, sorry, I hear that. And you are?
My name's Ben Brooks. I teach with her.
Thank you, Ben, for being here on behalf of Kathy. All right. Last year, the Strive Not to Drive Committee added a Workplace Challenge to include businesses and organizations to participate. Awards are given to businesses which have the most participants in the challenge. These awards are given by size of business. Two of the five winners are new winners this year. For the under 10 employees category, the award goes to South Wings, which is a new winner, representative from South Wings. For the 11 to 30 employees category, the award goes to the Southern Appalachian Highlands For the 31 to 50 employees category, the award goes to REI.[994.82][994.82](Laughter). For the 51 to 200 employees, the award goes to Evergreen Community Charter School. For the 251 or more employees category, the award goes to Buncombe County, and we have our own registered Ds come over to receive it, Drew Risinger. Thank you, Drew. Now we can applaud and recognize all our winners.[1030.04][1030.04](Applause). Claudia, do you want to talk about the award?
Yeah. Those, these awards were made by an artist in the River District, and they were given out last year, and the folks that won them had them displayed prominently in their business. And had, several of them had to give them up this year. They had one individual that said that she had given up a little dead body. But we didn't follow through with that.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you all so very much. And you all are welcome to stay for the remaining portion of the meeting as well. All right, Council, we have our consent agenda. Any member of the community wishing to address Council on any item on our printed consent agenda can do so at this time. Council, I do want to bring to your attention, we did have a request on Item D for the resolution conveying, thanks to the men and women who fought in the Korean War. I do want you to know, I wanted to make sure I had the dates. We did do this in 2010 and 2011, so this is not the first time that we've had the opportunity to thank the veterans who fought for, fought in the Korean War, but I'm happy to have done this in 2013 as well. Seeing no one come forward, is there a motion from Council or any questions?
Mayor, may I make reference to Item H on your consent agenda?
Yes.
In front of you all, you have a revised staff report and resolution that removes reference to the city utilizing the emergency provision and awarding the contracts.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And Mayor, can, I wasn't sure where we wanted to add this, but the staff report we have before us regarding coal ash draft consent order, public comment resolution, would it be appropriate to add that matter to the consent agenda as well?
We will add it as Item M. All right, Council, we have the items on our agenda, but I'd need a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
With the added item.
With the added item, M.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And Councilors, I don't need to ask for a vote, but ask for consideration. Item I deals with funds making it a little bit better for the police department to do their business by replacing some old computers, and that brought to an issue that I spoke with Martha about the fact that we really need to increase the digitalization of our legal files. And I know she's starting that trend of going forward, putting all our legal records into digital file, but we have lots of records that have not been done, and I would love to have a couple of nods to see about getting some additional resources to kind of get that moving ahead a little quicker in light of, we are hiring a new city attorney one day, and so it's important for us to have somebody to go into there, and she can, he or she can look at the files pretty quickly, because that's not the case right now. And so, kind of pushing that forward a little quicker would be important.
Yes.
And so, I already talked to Mr. Jackson about this, and so a couple of nods, and he'll see how to best address that. All right, thank you all so very much. All in favor of the motion? Yes, yes.
On Item M, that would keep the same form as the resolution that was emailed out.
That's exactly right.
And I think in essence what it's doing is saying that we are, in short term, seeking to add our voice to the hearing regarding the coal ash ponds, and that, and then we're looking for a longer-term solution, and we're not, is that essentially what it says?
Mayor, do you mind if I address that?
Go right ahead.
Jan, I would agree with your assessment, and I would also mention that I did have an opportunity to speak with the representative from Duke, allow them to review a proposed comment letter and get their feedback, and they understand what we're doing tonight. And just wanted to let you know that, kind of tried to make that a full process there.
I appreciate that, because I think that I would not want it to be thought that we are doing something of this gravity without giving it great thought and some discussion from Duke going forward with where they are, and we certainly understand the seriousness of those coal ash ponds, but I also would like for them to be at the table, so.
Yes.
If that, if this incorporates that, I'm good with it.
Yes, but I think there's strong recognition that Duke Energy is a partner of the city, and we want to continue that partnership.
And I think what staff has put together is a resolution that is more of an imbalanced nature to say that we recognize that they're an important entity in this community, and we want them to look at the issue. I think for me going forward, having those conversations with Duke about the process and what they're doing is important, because we not only have coal ash, you know, from their plant, but, you know, we as a council saw that it went to the airport, and kind of meet some of the airports meets years ago, and so this is an important issue in our area, and I think this is a more balanced approach.
I think balance is very important, because there's not a good alternative right now. We want everybody to be working toward the same goals, and I would, you know, we need to be at that table. We don't need to be just throwing rocks.
Nope, nope, I completely agree. All right, so we have a consent agenda, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. The motion carries. Council, we're going to move over to our updates. We have a couple of updates. The first one is from the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee, from the chair, David Nash will make a presentation, assisted by Heather. Welcome, Heather, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Yes, this is going to be a tag-team approach, and it'll go as soon as I figure out how to show the slide shows. So I'm David Nash, I'm the Chair of the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. I'm very glad to be able to work with your employee, Heather Dillashaw, who helps to coordinate the activities of our committee and does much more, takes a real strong approach to the policies related to homelessness in our community. I'm also the Chief Operations Officer of the Housing Authority, of course, but that's not my job here today. We are focusing on the point-in-time results of the count that was done in January, so about six months ago, as far as the number of homeless in our, in our community, looking back over the last few years to see where we've come. We're talking, we talk a lot about Housing First, but just as a reminder, Housing First is a priority that was adopted by the city and the county when we adopted our 10-year plan to end homelessness in, about eight years ago. Fundamentally, the focus of Housing First is that the solution to homelessness is a home for people who need it. Recognizes that there are high costs to the community of homelessness, particularly of people living on the street or in vehicles, but also including folks in emergency shelters and others. And those costs come in the form of law enforcement, jail expenses, first responders, emergency room visits by folks who have no place to live, and in many cases have huge health problems in addition to many mental health and substance abuse issues. The approach that we've taken on this particular part is to move the highest need folks into permanent housing with supportive services, so that they can begin to stabilize by having a roof over their heads, and it's a permanent roof over their heads, while case managers and others work to provide them with the services that they need to help them really stabilize their lives. Housing First is not the only approach, it's not the only approach of agencies in our community, and we'll talk about some of the other approaches as well. So focusing first on chronic and veterans homelessness, looking at the point-in-time count from January, chronic homelessness is down 82% since the 10-year plan was published. And that, we'll see some numbers there in a minute, but we found that nine out of 10 of the folks that have been placed in permanent housing are successful in terms of being able to make the adjustment. Some move on voluntarily, but nine out of 10 avoid eviction. Homeward Bound has placed more than 640 people in permanent supportive housing, and they've been focusing on the chronic. The Veterans Administration or Department of Veterans Affairs has focused a huge amount of resources with support from Congress over the years, and they've placed more than 250 homeless veterans in permanent supportive housing, also focusing on chronic homelessness. When you, we look at the numbers, you'll see that the number of homeless vets, well, let's do that now. So the number of chronic homeless persons is the lower line, we'll come back to that one in a minute. The total homeless persons is the line at the top, so looking back to 2003, 2004, which was the baseline year for the point-in-time count and for the initiative, we had 689 homeless people total on that, during the count that year. Over the years, that number has gone down, it began creeping back up in terms of the number of total homeless people, and we can explain a little bit more why that is. It's partly a counting issue. Homeless veterans has increased over that time, and those, there are 231 as of the last count, that's, that number is included in the 570 at the top of total people. The number of chronic homeless persons, however, has gone from 293 down to 54 over that same time period. Chronic homelessness is defined as someone who's been homeless for a year or longer or had four or more episodes of homelessness in the past three years. I think I did that right. So, back to the last slide briefly, the number of homeless veterans is technically up, but that represents a collaboration between ABCCM and the Department of Veterans Affairs and the Veterans Quarters, and we're never going to get completely to zero because of, in some ways, because of the services. Those are considered transitional housing beds at this point, and so those folks are counted in the homeless count as homeless, but they are in a much more stable, much stronger position in that location than they certainly would be if they're living on the street. certainly would be if they're living on the street. And I want, we mentioned a few data points for different agencies. I wanted to, ABCCM sent me a couple that I want to mention. Too late to get into this presentation, but the total number of veterans that they've served over the last five years is 2,328. The total unsheltered veterans in 2008 in this same point in time count, so veterans living in the woods was 61 and that number has come down to eight in 2012. So clearly a much better outcome. They also focus on jobs for the homeless and homeless veterans and they've placed 900, over 900 people in jobs with a roughly 85% retention rate for those jobs. And after two years in transitional housing, they report that somewhere in the range of 90% of their folks are placed then in permanent housing. So that's the story for chronic and veterans homeless over the last little bit. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather to give the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Just one other additional thing about veterans. We got flagged on our last report about, because we had such a low count of unsheltered veterans, they told me that number must be wrong, is what Washington told me. And I said, no, actually we really do have only eight. But we got flagged because it was so low, which, what a great thing to be flagged about. So David mentioned that, as you, and you saw on the graph where the number's going up a bit from what it was a couple of years ago. Two main reasons for that. One is the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act that put in an enormous amount of money across the country for rapid rehousing and prevention went away. And while we have replaced that funding with some funding, it is not, nowhere close to the level that we were when we had those big pots of money. We had almost a million dollars just in Buncombe County with those funds and those funds ended. And so those numbers have crept, have crept back up a little bit. It is also true that homelessness among families with children and young adults, 24 and under, is rising across the country. It's still early in that trend and so it's difficult to have a lot of data about why that is. Economy definitely seems to be part of it as well as the continued rise in rents without a rise in economic opportunity. So those look like that's exactly trending with that. You know, folks who were at 19, 20, who used to be able to rent a room or do those kinds of things, that's becoming harder and harder to do on low wage, low wage jobs. We have a subcommittee that is more comprehensive than we have had in the past involving school social workers, other providers from Buncombe County Human Services, looking at how we can do different strategies for families with children because we do not have those big funds from the Recovery Act anymore, how we might do some more cross pollination of resources and staff for supportive services on the prevention side as well as on the getting folks really quickly back into housing once they come into the system. As you can see, the number is higher than, than it was a couple of years ago with that funding. Other strategies that we're using is that agencies are shifting their former emphasis on shelter to permanent housing. Homer Bound has closed its shelters. ABCCM, as you remember, closed its large shelter when they opened the vets quarters. So those are responsible for some of our rise in permanent housing. Those resources that were in shelter have gone into permanent housing. The Rescue Mission is undergoing, as you know, renovation that we hope will soon add more family options for shelter as well as case management with those folks from Rescue Mission staff. We have no unsheltered children and haven't for a long time. So that is just something I think that helps us all feel like at least we're keeping kids from not sleeping outside. Doesn't mean they're not sleeping in cars some, we do find that occasionally, but we are working on outreach with school, with the schools and that will kick off again as folks come back to school to identify those families very quickly. We've had a couple of funding shifts that have contributed to putting more money back toward housing based on the success of the Recovery Act funding. One is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which the City of Asheville is now the fiscal sponsor for. That's money that we receive and you will, that will be on your agenda in the next month for this year's, this year's grant submission. That used to only fund shelter and now the majority of it has to go toward rapid rehousing. And so we've been successful last year, and this will be the second year, at putting more than 60% of that funding toward rapid rehousing and have rehoused folks who have come into the system very briefly, probably around 200 to 250 individuals and families that are back into housing very quickly. And the average, the thing about rapid rehousing is the average per individual spending is less than $1,500. So it's a very low intervention cost wise with a very, very good result. And so that's why those funds are so important. The other thing for veterans, the same kinds of funds have been invested in from the Department of Veterans Affairs through Congress for rapid rehousing money that does the same thing for veterans and veterans' families. ABCCM manages a regional program for Western North Carolina, just got announced for an expansion of that program that we will continue to have those funds in our community for veterans and veterans' families. So that's, that's very good news on that front as well. So this is just showing where those different strategies have folks. We have around 250 folks in emergency shelter, 266 folks in transitional housing, 200 of those are at the vets quarters. So the vets quarters number is pretty high, 200 folks in transitional housing all the time. Those beds stay full with a waiting list. And our unsheltered count is down to just around 50. The folks that we're concentrating on right now are, as I mentioned, the families with children as well as the folks who are hard to house. That's the folks that have failed out of some other programs or who have not been an appropriate match for those programs. These are folks who are what we call high utilizers of all of our systems. They're the ones that are in jail a lot, they're the ones that are in the emergency room a lot because of lack of care access and all those things. We've been looking at models around the country, including one in Charlotte, about how to work with those folks in a way that is both good for them and good for the community and are working on a literal bricks and mortar project that will house those folks in a different way. And so we hope to see that gain some traction and move off the ground sometime late this year. You have any questions for us?
Don't go up to the questions until we say the thank you.
Okay.
And again, my first thank you is for the commitment that the city has shown by funding and hiring a homeless initiative coordinator and for all the work that Heather does. She does an awesome job. But also, you know, this is important collaboration between the city and the county and a successful collaboration between the city and the county. Half of our members are appointed by the city and, well, some are appointed by the city and some are appointed by the county and we work well together. And also definitely thank you for the direct financial support that the city council provides to case management in our community and to supporting folks. Thank you to Gordon as our liaison and thank you to you all for your support. And we would be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Smith.
Thanks y'all for being here and bringing a lot of really good news and helping us to see where we're going forward. I want, just to thank these committee members, I would invite y'all to drop by one Monday when they're meeting because this, this is a committee where everyone tends to show up and folks are very dedicated to making this happen. The Emergency Solutions Grant, folks worked a lot of extra hours out of this committee, a lot of extra volunteer hours under a real tight timetable. Jeff Stoddinger and the staff also worked under that tight timetable to make sure that we were able to apply and, and y'all's good work helped us to make sure those grants got where they needed to go. So real grateful for that and for the providers who are out there doing this every single day, living lives of service for these people in our community who most need our help. And I'm very grateful for what y'all are doing and for what they're doing out there every single day. You mentioned some of the numbers and the reasons we're seeing them. I know that one thing that's certain in our community is that we're seeing the funding for fiscal legal services decline precipitously and they are among our first line providers for homelessness prevention. And we're talking about best bang for your buck. They're, they're it. So I think going forward, it's going to be important for us to look at how we can support them. I also want to give a shout out to the Haywood Street Congregational Church and ABCCM for having gardens that folks are working and producing food out of as part of the community building that goes on in both of those places and the skill building. And lastly, transitioning to the next part of this mission, the tenure plan to end chronic homelessness, that 82% reduction, we're on our way to effectively solving this problem. And I appreciate the forward thinking that's going into the transition into the next part of the mission. I'll look forward to seeing those data points and the strategies that come out of the committee. But I also want to point out that the systems that we've put in place, the Housing First model, the rapid rehousing, we are, we're going to need to keep those systems in place at least if we don't want to see those numbers rise again. That, the reason we're there is because we're doing what we're doing and if we stop doing it, those numbers could get worse again. So I appreciate council's commitment to, to addressing homelessness in our community and I'm confident we're going to be able to keep doing it going forward.
Councilman Bothwell.
Yeah, I have something to add. I'd like to congratulate Chief Anderson and the Police Department for the reorganization of the Downtown Patrol. It seems to have really smoothed relationships with the homeless community down there. It's changed quite a bit. I was lucky enough to sit in on a meeting with homeless advocates, the chief, the downtown officers and learned a lot. And one of the things that really troubled me is that there's an awful lot of resources devoted to collecting drunk homeless people who apparently procure malt liquor at just two or three places downtown. And I really wish there was some level of moral suasion we could use to convince those stores, I don't know, stock near beer or something. Because it really, it seems to be just a few sources and that's diverting emergency crews over and over and over again, taking them either, well, often to the hospital. And it just seems, and I know that the federal government reimburses, I think that's the case, for the actual emergency calls, but I can't believe that covers our costs in terms of having to continue to deal with that same problem over and over and over. At least the people under roofs drink at home and that helps keep them off the street. And nothing you can really answer to that, but I am really pleased with the way the police, the policing has changed downtown.
I would like to briefly respond. I think, I agree with you about the policing and I thank you for those comments. Also, you know, we do have, we, we talked about the hard to house, we didn't really describe that population, but you know, they're essentially the 10% of folks who have not been able to be successful in public housing, voucher housing, any other kind of supportive housing so far. And from personal experience, based primarily because they could not get their substance abuse under control and they just screamed and yelled and bothered people all night long and couldn't stay. So finding a place that is, that we can build as a community, and we don't have actual bricks and mortar in mind yet, but finding a place that can provide a roof for those folks and an alternative to, to that kind of extremely disruptive behavior downtown or wherever they happen to be is an important priority because they are costing us, or the federal government, or whoever, they're costing us as a society a lot of money for emergency room visits and trips there and that sort of thing.
The one response I would have to that, which I didn't, I didn't mention here is we do, as you saw, work closely with APD in very productive ways. And one of the things we started just in the past couple of months because of the increase in emergency response calls is some targeted reporting from the APD to me so that we can find which outreach workers may be able to pay more attention to some of the folks that are the high utilizers, high utilizers, and we're having already some success at engaging those folks a little more. It's not, it's not an overnight fix, but we are working on some more targeted engagement and outreach to those folks.
Thank you.
Wonderful. I just want to say this past week, today's Tuesday, so Monday, there was a meeting with the VA and they were talking about their numbers and their next step, since they're really doing a good job of working with homelessness in our community, is dealing with mental illness. And they're able to do that because of the strong collaboration that exists between all the service providers in our community. And I just want to say thank you to committee members for being committed to the city's vision of removing chronic homelessness in our community and allowing the partnership with the VA to be able to expand, to really address some needed issues in our community because it's a strong collaboration. So thank you so very much and I hope that you would share with all the member agencies our commitment and our appreciation for their, their work on this issue. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, we're going to next get an update on our stormwater infrastructure. So we would like to welcome the Assistant City Manager to the area, to make a presentation. This is the first time she's made the presentation as Assistant City Manager. So welcome Ms. Ball.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of city council. The purpose of tonight is to provide council with an update on where we are with both our efforts on dealing with the increased rainfall amounts that we've gotten this year as well as planning for future, the potential of future events. The, really what we're looking at is how we deal with stormwater management on steep slopes. That's where, over the rainfalls that we had in early July, really had an impact on several landslides and is going to cost quite a bit of money to fix as we move through the next year. So one of the things we're seeing in our community is some issues associated with climate change and trying to adapt to those. The issue is that, that they come in all various shapes and sizes. Some of them are more frequent rain events, which is what we've experienced recently, less predictable weather patterns, potential for drought, the opposite, high groundwater table, forest fires, tornadoes and sinkholes. A lot of communities are trying to come to terms with this by doing climate adaptation planning. And that's, that's one of the seeds I think we would like to plant with you is that we would like to start thinking about how do we, how do we take where we're vulnerable and try to address it beforehand so that it's not so devastating when it occurs. So you saw this when Mr. Schuler came before you, just to talk about the amount of rainfall we've received this year. And again, we've received, we're expected to exceed almost 65 inches of rainfall, which hadn't happened since 1973 in our area. This is another graph that shows you the amount of rainfall and you can see, of course, in 2013, that spike that caused a lot of our slides to occur. And again, this is just another example, these are rainfall amounts. The red line is a normal year, the green is what we have experienced over, over this past year. This is an interesting slide that NEMAC has provided. It's a correlation between landslide events and the amount of rainfall that we received, we received. So the, the X graph is timeline. So what you can see is the spikes, the top is land, significant landslide events and the bottom is significant rainfall events. So you can see that there are spikes that occur in those landslide numbers that correlate to the amount of rainfall that we receive. So that's very helpful in being able for us to make a direct connection between the cause of these landslides that are occurring. This is a map that NEMAC also did, and many of y'all may have seen this, that provides data on the purple areas are areas that are high landslide areas because of the formation of the rock underneath, the slope of the land, several different factors. And what we saw that occurred in July is for, this is Buncombe County, but we saw particularly in this area, this is where we saw the majority of the slides that occurred. So that, that directly correlates to the data that we have before us and the information that we have to know, these are particular areas that are prone to flooding, I mean, to landslides. During a recent meeting that our Stormwater Services Manager had with NEMAC, they were able to actually pull up the locations where we had slide and they showed some of the highest in the City of Asheville. So it correlated directly with the data that they had provided in terms of where we were most vulnerable. I wanted to provide you some information. I know that, that it's always difficult when we face an emergency and want to figure out what happened and what can, what can we do to improve. I did want to show you that we have done a significant amount of work. We have done capital improvements to the tune of replacing over 1,700 linear feet of pipe. And more importantly, maintenance activity that's occurred. The, the top slide is yearly maintenance activities, which shows that we've addressed 265 work orders. That doesn't tell us the size of each work order or exactly how many linear feet of ditch was cleaned. Below though, you'll see that particularly the drains that are cleaned, it shows that almost 9,000 drains were cleaned and drain tops cleaned. Drains means going down in them and getting the debris and what's collected in the bottom of them. The tops is any leaves or barriers that are on top of the grate that need to be removed. So we felt like that was significant in demonstrating that we had been working on So we felt like that was significant in demonstrating that we had been working on preventative maintenance, not to say that we can't improve. So what we come to you tonight with is a larger systematic approach to dealing with the vulnerability that we have associated with slides, given that the amount of rainfall is unpredictable and asking ourselves, what can we do to better prepare? So we've kind of come up with a formula that I think tonight we'd like for you all to either give us feedback on or tell us that you agree that we're going in the right direction. We'd like to coordinate with our local experts. We're very fortunate to have a lot of folks in this area who know a lot about weather and the predictability of that. So we would ask that we go ahead and start getting those people together and having a conversation. And then we hold community meetings, not just in one area, but all those areas that are vulnerable to those slides. And then we would like to develop both short and long-term strategies to deal with those, to address the vulnerabilities of this runoff, and then report back during the budget cycle on our findings. So some of those improvements, I don't want to, I don't want to say for sure because we need to go through the process, but some of those may be that we need to increase our ditching efforts, our maintenance on ditching, increase mowing, perform watershed analysis to say, if we improve the steeper slope areas, what does that do to our lower-lying areas? Do we cause flooding problems with those? Do long-term, a long-term vulnerability assessment on all of our climate change issues, review of steep slope ordinances, and review of standard specifications to really say, you know, do we need to have a different section when we're building roads on steep slopes? So that is the conclusion of the presentation that I have for you, and I would just look for some general direction that we're going the right way with what we've laid out.
All right. Counsel, if we could provide the direction confirmation that we are consensus that we do want to see the public hearings, we want to see the plan for the 15 fiscal year budget. So start that process sooner rather than later. Councilman Hunt.
Mayor Bellamy, I think we're on a really good track. It's been a little over a month since the worst damages occurred. We, all of us on council have gotten phone calls and emails individually. Some of us probably more familiar than we ever wanted to be with specific challenges in certain neighborhoods. But one of the things that has really stood out to me, Kathy, is the number of folks in the community that say, you know, and I'd also like to help, I'd like to, what role can I play to help the city do, perform better? I think the measures we're taking here are great, but as we talk to community groups and neighborhoods, helping them understand that they can, they can step forward and notify city, and we've got great technology now, using smartphones to point out, you know, blocked drains, ditches that are overflowing with erosion and whatnot. So I, I think, as you talk more, you'll find a real willingness to, for partnership from the citizens. Thank you.
I have one question.
Cecil Bothwell, Councilman Bothwell, then Vice Mayor.
Okay. I have a question and, and I guess two questions. One is, the word had gone around on Sunset Mountain, I believe, among neighbors there that we had, the city had reduced its ditch clearing efforts along roads there. Was there a change in our?
No. I mean, we could probably improve. There's a cost associated with doing that, but we are limited with the amount of time that we can do that type of maintenance, but there's been no reduction.
Okay. I would like those people to be reassured. I mean, with the heavy weather, of course, it's, there've been new effects. The other question I'd like to see answered in the course of looking at this is, I believe our steep slope law applies from 2220 up.
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to know how many slides and water problems there were below 2220 due to all this. I know that that's where the terrain begins to really go up, but I'd just like to have that as part of the information. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about this, Kathy. I like the direction, I like how comprehensive it is and that it's going to be thoroughly studied, and we're going to look at a whole plan in the fiscal year 2015. So that'll be kind of February, March, April in there. But I think some folks will be concerned about what changes we're making, starting now, going forward. Apparently won't ever stop raining since this has started. And I'm wondering if there's anything we can, we're doing in the short term, changing our policies in any way, or procedures, or anything like that.
Well, I think we're, in acknowledgement of what's going on, we're, as Councilman Hunt said, we're trying to ask our citizens to let us know when they see problems, and we will make those a higher priority, given that we are vulnerable in those areas. The other thing is, we are trying to pay more attention and go more frequently to those areas to see if we need to unclog drains and just, just give them more attention because we, during this period of time, we know that they're more susceptible. Once the slide starts, sometimes it becomes difficult to control in certain areas. So it's assigned to us that we need to start paying more attention to it. So we are, just as a matter of using the existing resources that we have, we are putting more of those resources into the areas that are more susceptible.
All right, Counsel.
Just real briefly, Mayor.
Councilman Both, Smith.
Kathy, thanks for bringing this. I'm supportive of the process going forward, and I just really appreciate that it's going to be this data-driven process, and you're going to be able to bring us some strategies in the new year with some science behind them and some numbers attached to them.
All right, Counsel, it sounds like we have consensus to move forward. Kathy, you will provide us a timetable at the appropriate time?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from Counsel? Just making sure. All right, Counsel, we're going to move forward to our public hearings. We have two public hearings that have been advertised for this evening. The first, first public hearing is Item A, the Public Hearing for Substantial Amendment to the 2013-14 Action Plan to Make Final Allocation of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds. Jeff Stodenger will make a brief report.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. In April, at your last meeting in April of this year, you approved the action plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds for 2013-2014. The Advisory Committee, the Housing Community Development Committee, and the Asheville Regional Housing Consortium took a very conservative viewpoint in terms of the amount of funds that would be available. As you remember, there was no federal budget at that time, so we did not know exactly how much money would be available. I'm here today with good news. We received roughly 167,000 more in Community Development Block Grant Funds and about $90,000 in home funds. The Home Consortium directed staff to revise the action plan to just pro-rata distribute the home funds if the change wasn't greater than 10%. And so you don't see any significant change per project. This will just help those projects that were recommended hopefully come closer to meeting their goals for the number of affordable housing units produced in our community and throughout the four-county consortium area. The CDBG allocations considered by the Housing Community Development Committee also generally took the same approach and increased by approximately 14% each of the approved, already-approved projects. Only in the Public Services category for the Homeward Bound AHO Program and for the Piscile Legal Services Homelessness Prevention Program was a difference there. Approximately $25,000 in public service funds was allocated primarily to those two organizations. We're limited in Public Services category to 15% of the total funds available, and those organizations had been cut significantly. You already heard earlier today about the difference they're making in terms of eliminating homelessness in our community, and the Housing Community Development Committee recommended a proportionally greater increase to those two organizations. Otherwise, no significant changes in proposed deliverables, and I'd be pleased to answer your questions or the public's as I can assist in that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing to public comment at this time on the proposed Seeing no one move forward, Counsel, any questions, comments, or motion? Councilman Davis.
Mayor, we're very grateful to have had that increase. Wish it were more, but with that, I would move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. And for the questions or comments from Counsel, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Counsel, we're going to move to our last public hearing, which is a public hearing to consider rezoning of 39, 43, 47, 55, 61, 67, 71, and 77. Finley Avenue from Institutional District to RS8 Residential Single Family High Density District. Blake Esselton will make the presentation.
Good evening. The area in question is in the southwest corner of the Kennelworth neighborhood. It's above the Silverman site that many will be familiar with and above Swananoa River Road. The area is 1.42 acres. It is vacant and wooded and has, it's fairly steeply sloped. I have more information on the topography if folks are interested. This area also has a complicated recent zoning history. There are four zoning actions related to this site just since 2010. There was originally a multifamily apartment project proposed. There was also a city-initiated rezoning. There are a lot of details in the staff report. The institutional zoning dates back to the days when there was a medical institution, and this property was included with the campus of that medical institution. In May, this property was subdivided into nine lots resembling single-family lots, as you can see on the map. The institutional zoning actually does allow for single-family residential development. However, it has larger side setbacks. So the applicant is interested in the rezoning. Their primary interest is to have the RS8 side setbacks, which would allow more space for the building envelope without having to move down the slope. Staff feels this is consistent with the adjacent zoning. Staff actually sought such a zoning in 2011. They feel, we feel it's a better fit for steep slopes and the narrow access roads. The intended purpose for the Institutional Zoning District really doesn't fit on this particular piece of property. And when the city-initiated zoning was brought forward in 2011, the primary reason for objection was that the property owner was not on board. Now the property owner is on board. The Neighborhood Association and some other neighbors have voiced support, and the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff feels that the request is reasonable. It's consistent with the comp plan and other adopted plans, and is, staff is recommending approval. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Esselton. At this time, we'll open the public hearing to public comment. First hearing from, a representative from the developer of the development, if you'd like to speak.
I would like to start by thanking City Council for their time this evening to review the application for rezoning. Also, thank Blake for his time and effort to, for the application. Our goal in the rezoning process is to fit these lots into more of the Kennelworth neighborhood, what the integrity of that neighborhood is, and a less density is our goal for rezoning of these lots. Again, as Blake mentioned, there was the recommendation from the planning board previous that these lots be rezoned to RS8. So we feel that this is in line with that recommendation. Again, our goal is not only to keep within the value and the integrity of the Kennelworth neighborhood, but also, we feel, add to the neighborhood as well with single-family homes. And that would be the goal of what would be built in, on the Finley lots. So again, I thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions that may be.
No question. If you would just state your name for the record.
My name is Kevin Skarmack. I apologize.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other member of the community wishing to address Counsel at this time on the public hearing? Yes, ma'am. If you could come forward, state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Teddy Jordan from 30 Normandy. I'm the president of the Kennelworth Residents Association. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Speaking on behalf of the neighborhood, we support the city staff and the P&amp;Z recommendation to rezone this property from, these nine lots on Finley, from Institutional to Single Family. We feel that single-family zoning will be more consistent with the neighborhood. And while this recommendation, if you approve it, will bring this particular property in alignment, or we feel in alignment with the neighborhood, is this going in and out? Okay.
It's fine.
With the neighborhood zoning, we still have concerns with some remaining large tracts of land that maintain institutional zoning, and that would mean the property next to Kennelworth Inn, the property behind these nine lots down the hill, as well as the Riverlink property that was, or the property that was donated to Riverlink. All those large tracts of land still maintain institutional zoning, and that is a concern for the neighborhood. Nothing would please us more if we could have closure on this issue. We have, after all, been doing this for three years, but we still don't have the end in sight. Earlier in the spring this year, we, the developer, did provide Kennelworth Residents Association with a settlement offer. We responded to that. We did not get a reply. We have responded and followed up three more times, and we still have not had a response. So there are some open questions. And I say this now with all, without any reservation, that the community is still committed and united in protecting what we think is a very special mountainous neighborhood. And so we're going to stay the course. Regarding this nine-lot rezoning, I want to thank both the city staff and planning and zoning for their time and thorough review on the matter, and I ask City Council to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. If you could step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Bellamy and City Council members. My name is Valerie Ho, and I live at 35 Finley Avenue. After three years of the Kennelworth neighbors attending countless meetings and coming before you, I am very thankful that this rezoning will mean that there will be only nine single-family homes on Finley instead of the original 50 units planned. But I want to point out that this happened not because the city or the P&amp;Z had the process in place to deny the building of such an inappropriate-sized development on a steep, steep slope. I hope City Council will look at the big picture of what is happening on the southern slope of the Kennelworth neighborhood and direct P&amp;Z and city staff to take into account two other large parcels from the same developer that are both zoned Institutional. The steep slope next to the Kennelworth Inn is of great concern to the neighborhood, where a 50-unit development can still happen. This is also the steep slope where the city's own flow stability map shows higher hazard for debris flow landslide. In light of the report on this stormwater presentation today that I've just heard, and in light of the recent heavy rains and landslides with houses falling down slopes, will City Council make it a priority to protect our neighborhood from the potential of such a disaster happening in our own neighborhood? Thank you for listening to our concerns.
Any other member of the community wishing to address Counsel? Counsel, we'll close the public hearing for public comment.
Make a question.
Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Institutional to RS8 Residential Single Family High Density as a standard rezoning, and find that the request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further questions or comments from Counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Counsel, we're going to move over to unfinished business, and we have one item. It's the Resolution Removing City Management Discretion to Allow Alcohol at Special Events of 1,000 or More Attendees in City Parks Zone Medium to High Density, Multifamily Residential Where the Event Boundary Is Within 100 Feet of Any Residential Dwelling Unit. And Sam Powers will make the presentation. Mr. Powers, welcome. It's been a while. Glad to have you this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to be here. Sam Powers, Economic Development Director. At a recent City Council meeting, Counsel asked staff to review the permitting for park facilities for large special events, and several members of city staff from different departments helped research. And several members of city staff from different departments helped research and prepare a staff recommendation. Those folks include John Filmon, who is now in our Economic Development Office, and Alan Glines from Planning, Janice Ashley, who you'll hear from in just a few minutes in our city attorney's office, and Roderick Simmons, our Director of Parks and Recreation. As I mentioned, Janice is here, and she's prepared to get into specifics of the proposed recommended resolution. And other staff members are also present to answer questions that you may have. I'll turn over the podium to Ms. Ashley to review the resolution and recommendation.
Welcome, Ms. Ashley.
Good evening, mayor, council members. In trying to approach this and write a resolution to prevent, well, to address the concerns of the MLK neighborhood and the park there, we thought the best approach was to think about the criteria that would go into why, why was Brewgrass, for example, such an impact on that neighborhood? And so, looking at the criteria, one, of course, it was the size of the event. When you have a special event that's 1,000 or more, that's very likely to create an impact, especially when it's in a park that is zoned high-density residential, as MLK Junior Park is. It's zoned RM8, which is high-density, multi-family residential. And then, you've got the other factor of alcohol being permitted. The Special Events Guide allows the discretion of city management to allow alcohol in parks. And then, of course, the special events permits come forward, and that's at council's discretion to approve those or not. And then, another factor is the proximity of that event boundary to the nearest residential unit. And in the case of MLK Park, where it is and where you would have an event is within 100 feet of a residential dwelling unit. So, in the history of special events, there's lots of criteria that go into deciding whether a special event can go there. But for events of 1,000 or more, there are very few parks that could accommodate that. In fact, most of the parks where such events are held are not zoned residential. They are, for example, Carrier Park. We have a lot of large events there, but that's zoned river. Pack Square Park is zoned CBD. Other parks, like Memorial Stadium, is zoned Institutional. It's only MLK Junior Park, which is zoned RM8, that had the ability to accommodate 1,000, an event of 1,000 or more. And when I say accommodate, it's because it has infrastructure. It had lighting. It was built as an athletic field. It had parking. There are other parks in the city that are zoned high-density, multi-family, but they do not have the infrastructure to support an event of this size. So, the resolution that we came up with to, basically to prevent large-scale events with alcohol to occur again at Martin Luther King Junior Park, is to have a resolution removing city management discretion to allow alcohol at special events of 1,000 or more attendees in any city park that is zoned medium to high-density, multi-family residential, and where the event boundary is within 100 feet of any residential dwelling unit. And I believe Councilman Pelly had asked whether this will impact other residential parks. And again, the answer is no, because this is the only, this is the only park that is zoned multi-family, high-density, that has the capacity for 1,000, the large-scale event. And so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, how we arrived at this. Again, I was just trying to search for a reasonable basis to, to make this kind of a resolution.
All right. Councilman Bothwell.
Yeah, I have a question. It seems that when we discussed this previously, it sounded like the neighbors were concerned about the size of the, of the event, more than specifically about the alcohol being served. And is it deemed unlikely that you could attract 4,000 people to a flower festival or to a clown contest or something, you know, that wouldn't have alcohol? I mean, have we really addressed the size issue for MLK? That's the question I have.
Compatibility.
Councilman Bothwell, I recall that the neighborhood was concerned not only with the size, but with the alcohol as well. And so, the way that we tailored the conditions was to address, without specifically singling out Martin Luther King Park, we looked at specific criteria that would apply to Martin Luther King Park and to any park that would accommodate a crowd of that size so as to prevent city management from exercising its discretion to allow alcohol at certain events of 1,000 or more. So, my recollection is slightly different from yours. I believe that the community was concerned about the alcohol, because I heard reference to people being under the influence, wandering around in the neighborhood. I'm not sure if I answered that question.
Are you asking if a special event of 1,000 or more could still occur at Martin Luther King Junior Park as long as there's no alcohol served?
Right.
And, you know, John is here to, John Filmon could probably, there's always a criteria evaluation that goes into every special event. So, I suppose it could be that if you have a flower festival, no alcohol, 1,000, it could go there if it meets other criteria. But we tried to write it in a way that, again, we thought the alcohol was the main issue.
It may be hard to get that figure crowd without alcohol, so.
But the answer to your question is yes, it's possible.
Right.
All right. Council, this is not a public hearing, so before I can take public comment, I need to have a motion on the floor for the public to consider.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as written in the staff report.
Second. The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any member of the community wishing to address council on this issue may do so at this time. And if you come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Carmen Ramos Kennedy. I reside at 24 Curve Street. I didn't come prepared to speak. Renee had to leave because of her elderly grandmother's pickup needs. Thank you for considering this. We are concerned about both numbers of people and alcohol, to be quite frank. And that's really all I have to say. I, I hope that this means we're not going to be getting thousands of people in our community again. You know, I understand the, the under number, 1,000 and below, that's great. But I'm hoping that this means that's what's going to happen. Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for your help.
Hi, my name's Jonathan Rainscott, and I appreciate city council listening to me tonight. I came to the last city council meeting and heard the concerns of the East End neighborhood. And I was a little disappointed that their concerns had not been heard by council for over a year in this matter. And wrote you guys an email the next day about that. Sorry, Mr. Davis, yours didn't go through. I left the J off of Jan. And what I heard was a lot of excuses as to why this issue hadn't been addressed over the course of the year. And that's, you know, one council person told me that this is a very complicated issue and that we needed to make sure that we had our constitutional coverage and all of this kind of stuff. And a couple of days later, I called Parks and Recs and asked them if I could rent a park. And they asked me which one. And I said Weaver Park. And they asked me what for. And I said, "A festival." And they said, "What, what do you want to do there?" And I said, "Well, I don't know. Drink some beer and play some guitar." And they said, "Well, it would be hard to have a festival there because there's not a whole lot of space at that facility." The acreage of Weaver Park, which runs between Merriman Avenue and Charlotte Street, is 6.6 acres, whereas MLK is 3.3 acres. Weaver Park has 39 parking spots, whereas MLK has 26. Weaver Park has a covered area with seven picnic tables over it. So, I couldn't understand why there wasn't enough space at this park, which is twice the size of MLK. And the answer that I got from John Filmon at Parks and Rec was that the policy of Parks and Rec is not to allow festivals or festival-related activities on ball fields. That's it. I don't understand why this resolution even has to exist. You have a, a rule in place already that prevents festivals from taking place, festival-related activities on ball fields, because the ball fields are there and they need to be maintained and all this kind of stuff. I asked about, you know, parking considerations. Brewgrass sells 3,500 tickets, and for a park that has 26 parking spots, there is no policy. There is no protocol. I don't understand why this could even happen in the first place. I was told that the original location of Brewgrass was, I guess, at Park, Pack Place or the downtown, and the construction had precluded them from being able to use that park in, at all again, or, you know, in the future. And so, there was an exception made to have Brewgrass at MLK. So, it was really easy to get an exception made, but it wasn't very, why was it so difficult to just enforce the rule that you already have on the books?
Oh, I think you bring a valid question that staff will have to look into. But I think tonight, we're trying to get definite resolution to this issue that's been lingering. And so, I think that's what we're going to get done tonight. Yes, sir. If you would come forward and state your name, please.
Hello. I'm Mike Rangel. I'm representing the Asheville Brewers Alliance. Thank you for your time. The Asheville Brewers Alliance was formed in 2009. We had six members. As of today, we have 31 members. And by the end of 2014, we project will provide 1,200 jobs in the western North Carolina. We want to show our unanimous support for Brewgrass, and we ask that you wise folks up here can come up with an alternative to help this festival that's helped all of our breweries and this community and the, all the recognition that's come. A lot of it started with the Brewgrass Festival. It's been voted the top festival in the South. It's been voted one of the top five festivals in the United States. And we, we are, feel like this, we don't want this to be the next on the, on the festival hit list this year. But we definitely want to support 100% what they do, and we just ask that you help us provide an alternative to keep this great festival going. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Renee White. As your non-president of the East End Valley Street Neighborhood Association, just wanted to address council today and say that we certainly are not against Brewgrass Festival. Think it's a great festival. Think it does a great cause. Just would like to remove it from our neighborhood community, and we will support them in any endeavors that they come up with in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? All right, council, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You had a comment?
Yes.
Councilman Pelly?
Thank you. Mayor, the, the East End Neighborhood Association reached out to me several months ago, and, and I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate them having done that. But I also appreciate Eddie Dewey and Danny McClintock also coming and meeting with the residents of the East End and trying to find a solution to this challenging situation here. You know, I, I think we all agree that, that Brewgrass has been a big success for our community here. It's helped turn Asheville into a beer city destination here. It's brought economic development here, and it's been a success at many levels here. I think unfortunately, though, for the East End neighborhood, it's sort of outgrown this location here. And, and, and it's time to try and find a location more suitable that, that, where it can work better. The, you know, the, the East End neighborhood has been meeting with staff and has talked to city council for over a year about the situation here now. And, and as much as I, you know, I think, you know, these are two strong competing interests here, but we are a city of neighborhoods here, and we have to, if this is a concern to the East End, and it's, and we need to try and figure out a way to bring some resolution to it. But I also want to just, and I'm going to be supporting the measure tonight here, but I also want to say that for me personally, I feel like that there are some missed opportunities here, too, that although Brewgrass has been on and off in the East End neighborhood for better than 15 years, the relationship between the organizers and the community association, there wasn't one until very recently. Unfortunately, I think the lesson learned for me in this situation here is that when we have events like this in residential neighborhoods, the importance of establishing communication between the leadership from the community and the leadership of the events, because I really believe that had that occurred in this situation here, we may have, we, we might not be where we are today. But unfortunately, I think we are where we are now, and, and again, I'll be supporting this resolution.
All right. We said all in favor, say aye. All opposed like sign.
Aye.
Okay. I mean, that was just a recap.
Oh.
We had already said all in favor, say aye, and they did. All opposed like sign. That's not, I'm quite sure that's not what you meant.
That's not what I meant.
Okay. Council, I did have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Jackson, and the request of the organizer for Brewgrass last time he was before us, asked for Memorial Stadium. And I asked Mr. Jackson to, to look into McCormick, which is different from Memorial. McCormick may be a better match in that it's not exactly in the neighborhood. It's a little removed. And so, if council's agreeable, he's willing to look into seeing, is it possible, since it's off-season, we have a contract with the tourists, which is different from Memorial. But just, just to kind of see if it's possible.
Certainly supportive of looking at all the options over there, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Council, I'm going to turn over to the vice mayor, who's going to go over to Boards and Commissioners's report.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Boards and Commissions had an opportunity to meet today, and we need to go through the five different committees here. And first, I just wanted to let you all know that at Boards and Commissions today, we had our second meeting with, with the proponents of, of forming a commission called the African-American Heritage Commission. I just wanted to let you know, we're, we, as a Boards and Commissions, Commission, Committee, are recommending that staff begin working with that group to, to formalize their wording needed for a formal resolution to come back to council to form that commission. That is going to hopefully be a joint commission between the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. And so, there's still, I think we're a little bit farther ahead in the process than Buncombe County is, so we'll need to kind of sync that up, but wanted to just give you an update about that process and also let staff know that that's our recommendation. On the committees, the first one is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. There are, there's technically several vacancies, but there are several folks that wanted to be reappointed. Barbara Melton, Scott Dedman, and Lindsay Simmerly. Boards and Commissions is recommending the reappointment of those three folks. And Boards and Commissions is recommending the, that we interview Robin Rings for the fourth seat, which is, which is a vacancy.
Move to vote for those three and to interview.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the ADA Compliance Committee. This committee is on inactive status, and we're recommending to keep it on inactive Unless anyone has any objection?
Nope.
Keep it on inactive status. Okay. Crime Stoppers. We, we were, we, the Boards and Commissions Committee would recommend interviewing applicant Mitchell. First name?
Anthony.
Anthony, thank you. But if anybody would like to interview anyone else, please let us know.
Fred Cook.
Fred Cook, okay. All right. The next committee is the River District Design Review Committee. Here, we, we have kind of a technical issue because we have several folks that are interested in being reappointed, which... in being reappointed, which we would recommend. But then there are two vacancies, Terry Meeks vacancy and Marty Black, but they are filling very specific vacancies, and we don't have applicants that correctly fit those vacancies, and that's why we're recommending re-advertising for those two slots. And the reappointment of Darren Green, Esther Hartwright, Richard Hall, and Carlton Collins.
So moved.
Second.
All right. And then, on the last one, the.
Do we need a vote there? Is there a motion I would say? Do we need a vote there?
That way, and say aye again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, the last one is the Tourism Development Authority, and Councilman Gordon Smith is the liaison with Tourism Development Authority. And what we would recommend in this situation is that we hold off to kind of give us a chance to sort of process this. This is an important appointment, and we wanted to just take some time and maybe make this appointment at the next council meeting, if that's all right. Any objections to that process? And that, I think, on the, there's one little housekeeping item, and I would ask Councilman Mark Smith to address the Civil Service Board.
Mark Smith?
Mark Smith?
Just blending the two.
It's a hybrid.
They're like brothers. Councilman Mark.
I'm the, thank you, Vice Mayor, I'm the liaison with the Civil Service Board. In our last meeting in June, we made some appointments to that board, two new appointments, and additionally, we appointed Marv Rosen to serve as chair of that board. And the process ended up being a little bit mistaken. I, as liaison, I feel badly that I didn't fully inform council and help us understand the process better. Couple of issues. First of all, when we appointed Mr. Rosen, his term was actually set to expire, and it wasn't certain that he would continue on much past that. In fact, now he's serving a term beyond its expiration date because a new person has not been appointed to that. The process will be that once the employees of the city of Asheville elect two representatives to serve on that board, the two folks who were appointed in June, plus the two elected representatives, will in turn appoint a fifth person. That is the seat that Marv Rosen is in now. It may just be that Marv Rosen is appointed again. I think he's willing to stand for that appointment, in which case, we would take a appointment of chairmanship then. The other thing that we, I think we mishandled slightly, was we did not have an open process that entertained possible interviewing and other candidacies for the chairmanship. And I think it would be a healthier process if we are orderly about this election of the chairmanship that way, and consider all candidates. So, I've spoken with the members of the Civil Service Board over the past three weeks or so, working closely with the city attorney to craft a resolution that will sort of solidify the status of Mr. Rosen's temporary chairmanship until now, until these employee elections can be held and his seat reappointed, and then perhaps interviewing him as a candidate for chairman. This board is the one board, I believe, that we have where the council appoints the chairman. I think in all other cases, the board members and the commission members select their own chairman, so this is a little different. So, bottom line is, at our meeting two weeks from now, I believe Ms. McGlohan will have a resolution drafted that will clarify these steps. We coordinated with the city clerk on how we'll administer it, and I think we'll move forward smoothly. Thank you.
Counselman Hahn, this is just an observation. At the last meeting, you did a lot of faux pas with your board representation, so I'm just have to get on you about causing us troubles with your board liaison. So, we're going to have to take you out to the shed house or some, outhouse or something, because you're getting us in trouble.
Deep apologies, Mayor.
Okay. Let this be the last time. Counsel, I don't have any printed sheets for public comment. Any members of the community wishing to address counsel? State your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. My name is Timothy Sattler, and in light of the recent revelation that State Representative Moffitt has held the city hostage through the lawsuit and the CSR, I believe that we should strongly consider filing extortion charges, if that's a possibility. And then, also, I wanted to point out that the, there's been a number that's been put out there regarding adding Sunday transportation for the bus system, and, you know, I've been, I've heard that it's close to $1 million of added capital expense to add Sunday service. And recently, at the Transit Commission, this was brought up. I had asked staff, Mariate, if there were a number of different options, and it turns out that there is an option of $318,000, which would give limited coverage, but still give the folks an opportunity to get to work in church on Sunday. So, just wanted to bring that up as well, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other members of council? I mean, a community wishing to address counsel? All right, counsel, we do have a closed session.
One quick announcement, Mayor.
Go right in.
Just, today, the city's neighborhood coordinator, Marcia Stickford, sent out an announcement to all the neighborhood organizations known in the city of Asheville to invite them to participate in the first-ever Festival of Neighborhoods that the Neighborhood Advisory Committee is organizing. This will occur on Sunday, October 27th, at the Sherrill Center at UNCA. Chancellor Ponder was kind enough to make that facility available. It looks, it's a first time out, but it's an opportunity for neighborhood leaders from across the city to come together, to share some of their successes, what's working, what's not, and also to celebrate the diversity of neighbors that we have in our community here. So, just wanted to put that out for everybody at 3:00 PM on Sunday, October 27th.
And what do you call that?
The Festival of Neighborhoods.
The Festival of Neighborhoods. I appreciate that. It's, I'm looking forward to attending, hopefully. Closed session.
Mayor, I move that Asheville City Council go into closed section, excuse me, closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general stature. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS 143-318.11A1. Second, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including litigation involving the following parties: state of North Carolina, Metropolitan Sewer District of Buncombe County, city of Asheville, W&amp;K Hotels LLC, Four Points Sheraton, Hospitality Lodging Investors, also known as Hotel Indigo, Nesbit, Asheville Venture LLC, the Renaissance Hotel, the city of Asheville, city council of the city of Asheville, and McKibben Hotel Group. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Stature 143-318.11A3. Third, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment of an individual public officer or employee. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A6, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential pursuant to GS 160A-168, the Personnel Privacy Act. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A1.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any comments or questions from counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We will go into closed session, and we will adjourn from closed session.